Good evening.
Good evening.
Called the meeting of Liberty County Board of Commissioners to orders. Good to see everyone. Thank some of you for coming out in this weather that we have. So appreciate your sacrifice. I see some young people here, so we'll hear later about what brings us to our audience, but it's good to see young people in our audience and I hope that you, while you're here, you will pick up a little bit on what we do here in these county sessions. So it's good to see you here and others of you who are on our agenda. Mr. Brown has the meeting been properly advertised?
Yes, sir, it has.
Alright, thank you, sir. Pastor Richard, the Pastor Richard Hayes is here. He's gonna lead us in our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Please stand now for invocation.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Hello, sir.
Well, good evening. Let us bow our heads. Gracious heavenly Father, we are so thankful and just grateful to be here. We thank you for another wonderful day, even though it's raining. We thank you for what the rain does to replenish this earth and we appreciate you for what you're doing in this community. How you're going to bless these leaders. I ask that you would bless these leaders as they go forth for them, even on tonight. Lord, God, every decision that is made, everything concerning this community is done in decency and in order and in excellence. We appreciate all that you are doing and how you continue to keep us safe and watch over us and we ask that you continue to do those things now. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, ever and ever. Ms. Gypsy, I didn't see you behind that corner. That's why the young people here, 4-H is here today. Alright, alright, alright. Good to see you all. And those of you too who, you know, we sometimes forget we have audits, what you call them, digital or electronic audit, whatever you call them, out there. So good to have you all tuning into our county commission meeting. Also, thank you for following us along as we, as we go. And we try to do our best to give you the best of our service and if there are any questions, please, Clint, can they send those questions through? We'll address them as quickly and efficiently as we can. So thank you for tuning in out there in Facebook land. Alright. Minutes for the July meeting will require approval, Commissioners. We have set for July 6th and July 15th.
Chairman, I make that motion that we accept the minutes as presented?
Second.
There's a motion to second that we accept the minutes from July 6th and July 15th as presented. Any discussion on those? If any of you are favorable, raise your right hand, please. Those opposed, the minutes are approved for July 6th and July 15th. Thank you. Right on into our departmental reports. Let's go now to Liberty County 4-H.
Ooh.
I know there's a, there's a new sheriff in town for 4-H. Mr. Aaron Hendrick, welcome, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here this evening and share this time with you. Just wanted to take a couple of minutes to talk a little bit about 4-H, Liberty County 4-H, and introduce myself to you all. I am the new Liberty County 4-H Youth Development Agent. I've literally been on the job for about thirty-one days, Ms. Gypsy. So I'm excited to learn about this community, about the youth and how we can work together to just, just develop our youth. Really quickly, just in case you have forgotten, 4-H is a youth development organization. We serve youth from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade in a variety of ways. We actually just had our junior, senior meeting from 4:30 to 6:00 PM and these young people just offered to come. I asked if they wanted to come. They came through the rain and so I just wanna definitely thank them for coming as well.
Let them come stand with you to their minds so we can see them close up in person. Come and stand with him, you guys, since you made the sacrifice to come and through the rain and on a voluntary basis. We love to appreciate our young people when they're doing positive things.
They may want to give their name and grade as well.
Think they may want to do that?
If that is okay with you, sir.
Sure do.
Alright.
Hello, everybody. I'm Jared Johnson. I'm going to my freshman year at school at Kennesaw. August 1st was officially my last day in 4-H, but I'm gonna be a counselor at camp.
Thank you, Jared. Wish you the best at Kennesaw.
I'm LaJohn Crawford and I just had my first day as a senior today.
Hello, sir.
What school?
Liberty.
Yay.
So you're gonna start the fight.
My name is Melvin Kimble and I'm a junior at Bradwell.
I should've recognized, I should've recognized you, but you growing up on me.
My name's Carla Mack. I'm a sophomore at Bradwell.
Good to have you, Carla.
Alright.
My name's Lexington Kozak Baumgartner and I'm actually starting as a freshman at the university, or Georgia Southern University in biology. 4-H saw me through to that and really happy and excited for it.
Thank you. Wish you the best at GSU.
Hi, I'm Kiana Kimble. I'm Kiana Kimble and I'm in the sixth grade as Louis Frazier.
Alright. Good to have you. Welcome, all of you. Yeah, we kinda know her.
And I'm Gypsy Tart. I am the program assistant for 4-H. Been here eleven and a half years now.
Been awhile. Good to have you.
Right.
So this is our 4-H family and really quick, I just wanna give you some updates on some things that we have moving forward. So right now, we have contacted and we are working with six out of the seven elementary schools. We'll be visiting them on a monthly basis, teaching a different curriculum throughout the school. Usually it's fifth grade, but in some schools it's fourth and fifth. So we do that once a month at six of the seven elementary schools right now and it will be all of the elementary schools by the end of the week. We have monthly meetings for each of our three clubs. So we have Clover Bud, which serves our students from kindergarten through third grade. We have Clover Leaf, which serves fourth and fifth grade students. And then we have our juniors and seniors, which goes from sixth grade all the way through 12th. So these are some of our junior and senior members right here behind me. We do that through a variety of ways. We have a cooking club, public speaking club, forestry judging, land judging, STEM club, cupcake club. We have a lot of clubs and so we just try to find ways to engage students. I'm a former teacher and the way that I explain it is 4-H is about building life skills. There's nothing wrong with the education system, but some of those skills that they don't get to learn in the school system, we focus on in 4-H. So that's our big motto, to learn by doing. And I just wanna invite you to any meeting, any event, any program, if you just wanna come to our office and talk to us about any ideas or anything that you have on your mind, we wanna make sure that you know that we, we love you, right? And we wanna make sure that you know who we are and we just wanna invite you into our office, into our program. So again, just wanna thank you for the opportunity and we look forward to really developing this program. I will say this, our expectation is that the Liberty County 4-H program will grow more than it has ever grown within the next year, okay? So I can promise you that we're gonna develop this thing bigger than it's ever been and we're gonna need your help to do it. So just thank you and appreciate you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Look forward to it.
A question. What, what? The 4-Hs. I was in the 4-H club about fifty-five years ago for a couple of weeks. What, what does the 4-Hs stand for?
What does the 4-Hs stand for, guys?
A. What? I still don't know.
Somebody wanna do the pledge?
No, just, just the 4-Hs.
Okay. 4-Hs. 4-Hs.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Are they all gonna do it with me, right?
Yes, let them do it. Don't leave out there by yourself.
Alright, right. We pledge our heads.
Oh, just, 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 not the pledge.
Not the pledge?
Yeah, just what the Hs are.
Okay, so the Hs stand for head, heart, health, hands and health.
Hands and health.
Thank you.
Alright.
I thought, I thought Commissioner Gillis was gonna offer to be a cupcake tester.
His eyes got real big when I mentioned cupcakes, so I was hoping.
What was it, though? Head, heart?
Head, heart, hands and health. Yeah. I never knew that, y'all.
Alright, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to our community. Mr. Davis?
Sir, good evening.
How are you, sir?
See, I think I have a couple of issues before you folks. The first is the firearms ordinance, which we discussed at your last meeting. At that time, I think you had some concerns and wanted me to address them and I've done my best to do that. Their revised ordinance is in front of you, but there are three principal changes. The first, if you remember, the discharge of firearms was prohibited really in all zoning districts of the county except dunes and marshes and agricultural and AR-1. And so it's been expanded. You can discharge your firearm now and not only those zoning districts, but the principal residential areas, R1, R2 and R2A. However, regardless of the zoning district, it has to be on a lot of at least ten acres. So if you're one of those zoning districts and you have ten acres, you can discharge your firearm, subject to the other conditions of the ordinance. So that's the first change. The second change addresses schoolhouses. If you remember, one of the conditions in the ordinance was that you had to be within at least a thousand feet of another residential structure or religious worship place or other gathering place. That's also been now extended to schoolhouses, that one thousand distance requirement. And then I know that a couple of Commissioners had concerns with discharge of firearms at night, so an additional condition is that you cannot discharge your firearm at night as defined by Georgia Department of Natural Resources regulations unless you're lawfully hunting during that time. Of course, Georgia does permit the hunting of certain species at night, you know, alligators, raccoons, things of that kind. And then lastly, if you'll look to section thirty, thirty-six dash seven, and this addresses, I believe, Commissioner Walden's concern, but if you're engaged in target shooting, regardless of where you're located, you have to have an appropriate man-made or natural backstop, a berm, slope, a board, a wall, something of that kind to slow or stop the bullet or projectile. And those are the three principal changes. Everything else has remained the same. And if you remember, discharge of firearms is prohibited not only in the areas we just discussed, but on county property and on the property of other people unless you have their permission. And then additional regulations are imposed to regarding the discharge of firearms, all as we discussed at your last meeting. And I'm not sure if you wanted to adopt this tonight or just take it and consider it, but the changes that we discussed at your last meeting have been incorporated and folks are free to look them over and perhaps adopt them at your next meeting if you'd like, or this evening.
Yeah. My observation is the enforcement piece, so I'm not sure if you want to try to tackle that, but not just having an ordinance on the books, but having the ability to enforce it.
Yes, sir. And we may want, if you folks want someone from the Sheriff's Department to come to your next meeting, discuss that, we can. But, you know, enforcement, a lot of ordinances is problematic, but at least in the, in the likelihood that someone is found in violation of the ordinance, at least now you have an ordinance that can be enforced.
Well, Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
I remember the last time when I asked the question, you know, did you get a chance to talk with anybody from law enforcement?
I have discussed it, but not, not formally, no, sir. As a matter of fact, we also surveyed other neighboring counties. I think you folks were curious as to how their counties were treating it. And as I mentioned, the treatment is just as different of each county. Some counties prohibited on county property only, some are as comprehensive as ours and others are kind of intermediate. But, but no, I haven't gotten feedback yet from the Sheriff's Department, Mr. Davis.
So the penalty for violation, is that in here or is it not?
It is. It's, it's just by reference. Any violation of our codes is punishable typically by six months, which is rare. Usually it's a monetary fine, not to exceed a thousand dollars, but it's the general penalty for any code violation.
Okay. Let's take, let's check this, let's check this can on down the road a little further. The, someone calls, law enforcement comes out. Okay, take it from there on until it gets to the courtroom.
Alright. Well, say for example, they're discharging their firearms in a, in a business neighborhood district, which is absolutely prohibited. And if they're witness doing that, they'll be cited and then that will be referred to the magistrate court.
Boop, boop.
Yep. And the magistrate court will handle the complaint from there. And typically, we'll have a code enforcement officer or representative of the county who will prosecute the case, but it's rarely an informal presentation to the magistrate court of the facts. And then they'll issue a fine or other punishment based on those facts. And those are the maximum fines and punishments I mentioned. In most cases, it's, you know, it's something much less than that, especially if the offender is irremorseful or wasn't aware of the county ordinance or something of that kind.
Okay. You just answered the question.
Kelly.
Yes, sir.
The person that's in violation doesn't get a citation and like go afford, I guess, Judge Olson or the state court, they go to magistrate court?
Yes, sir, magistrate.
And it, and it, okay.
Unless...
I mean, it's always, is it, is it a crime?
It, it is. Unless the, what their conduct also violates state law. And our ordinance tracks state law in many instances, so if they were to violate our ordinance, the chances are they may also violate state law. And if they violate state law, then they'd be referred to state court for prosecution. They could be. Of course, there's all sorts of discretion in law enforcement. You know, if a neighbor has a complaint against another neighbor and the sheriff goes and investigates and finds out that they're doing something they shouldn't, oftentimes they'll just give them a warning and if they cease, that's the end of it. But if it persists, then they will, they formally cited.
So it's not like breaking and entering, that, that kinda crime?
It's, it's, I mean, it's a criminal offense. It is.
It's a criminal offense? And it'd be handled through magistrate court?
Yes, sir, magistrate court. Unless it also implicates an offense of state law. And in that case, in most of the offenses are handled by state court as their misdemeanors.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, how you doing, Kelly? It's pretty clearly written, but I just wanted to find out for sure, some clarity. I guess us, we that live out in unincorporated areas, we've always, I guess, enjoyed a, I guess, a sense of looseness out there where we not really held to a lot of the standards that within the city limits are.
Yes, sir.
And I understand that we've got a lot of developments being built where houses on, I guess, one every half acre, four on an acre. I notice it says ten acres here, but say I got eight acres, I'm out there all by myself and I have the berm, the backstop and everything. Eight acres is a lot of land, five acres is a lot of land.
Yes, sir.
I think we probably need to, I would like to see us revisit this a little more thoroughly before we finally make a final decision on this. I guess I'm not completely satisfied with it as, as written, especially the ten acre limitation for one. That was just something I wanted clarification on.
And that's understandable. I think the ten acres was from our last conversation and I'll give you a couple of options. You know, as it's written now, it's a minimum of ten acres in those zoning districts I mentioned, but you could have it five acres applied to all. You could allow the discharge of firearms in agricultural and apply the five or ten acre limitation on the other zoning districts. You could allow it in agricultural and AR-1 and only apply the acreage limitations to those other more densely populated residential districts. So those are your, probably your three most common options. And still, regardless of whatever you impose as far as zoning classification, you're right, they still have to meet those other criteria, those other requirements. So say for example, you should allow it in all agricultural districts, it would still have to meet the distance requirements. If there were target shooting, it'd have to meet the backstop requirements. So they still have to meet all the other restrictions that are imposed by the ordinance. So I would give you those, those choices for simplification. Leave it as is, reduce the acreage, or eliminate the acreage as to less densely areas like agricultural or AR-1 and apply the acreage requirement to the balance of the more densely populated residential subdivisions.
And Commissioner Gillis was asking about the fines in the court system and all. Is this subject to misdemeanor felony charges?
It's, it's technically a code violation. It's more in the nature of a misdemeanor. Technically, it's still, it's still a criminal violation, code violation. But again, most of these circumstances, they're handled by warnings. You know, only if you have a repeat or persistent offender, I think, would you formally engage the judicial system.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I just had a question because, you know, I live in an unincorporated area, but I was, and I know we had talked about the ten acres, but just help me with this, y'all. You guys may need to help me with this, but like dove hunting over, like, you know, I know some of those guys out in Gum Branch have like a skeet shooting or dove hunting.
Yep, yes, ma'am.
So this, you know, would apply, but I think we may need to look at what brought this on as far as changing, did the state change? Look at it, if our guidelines are going along with the state, have they changed that we need to change ours?
We didn't have anything.
Yeah, I think, I think that was the concern.
We don't, we didn't have anything concerning?
Not really.
Well, I thought we, well, maybe that, when we looked at it last month, maybe it was just something that, it was a starting.
Right.
I watched you had last time.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, 'cause we had looked at like zoning and then we backed it down to looking at acreage. But I'm just wondering if, if those guys would still be able to dove hunt?
Yes, ma'am. Unlike, for example, the timber ordinance?
Yeah, I'm getting some calls.
Yes, ma'am.
They dove hunt over their gardens or whatever, however they do it.
Unlike the timber ordinance, for example, which you, which the county was required to adopt by state law, this is not mandated. So, you know, you folks will adopt anything, if all, if anything, that's something that's satisfactory to you folks and you think is needed and reasonable. But the ordinance does carve out exceptions for the things you just mentioned, you know, for hunting clubs, for skeet ranges, for hunting preserves, all of those things. And it does track state law as far as their protections. For example, if circumstances were to change at a later date, if you had a hunting club in agricultural district of the county now and a subdivision were to be developed next to it, state law protects those hunting clubs, as does this ordinance. So it recognizes the rights of hunters and others to, you know, to engage in sporting activities.
There's no doubt, I think we need something, especially in some of the more heavily populated areas, that are in the unincorporated area, they're definitely, we need to have something on the books.
Yeah, I think, I think it's fair to say, most of the county ordinances that I've reviewed, they do restrict it and prohibit discharge of firearms on county-owned property and they restrict it on the more densely populated zoning classifications. And once you get beyond that point, the requirements and restrictions are as varied as the county. Some require or prohibit nighttime shooting, others don't. Some extend the prohibition to other zoning districts by acreage or by density. So there are a variety of approaches. But what you're seeing is not uncommon as far as the requirements. Matter of fact, I think it goes a little bit further to protect the rights you just mentioned, recognized by state law than do some other local ordinances.
We can either address this now, we can certainly bring it back to our mid-month meeting, if there's gonna be any homework done in between now. If we're just gonna bring it back just as it is now, we may as well go ahead and, and address it now.
Yeah, and I'm happy to come back in the next meeting and in between. Now that you have the revised draft, feel free to give me a call and we can discuss the options, but...
But before you come in, I am reminded, when you talk about the acreage, you know, 'cause this is in Walterville, family owned, five acres cleared and I can easily see from one end to the other, I wouldn't want anybody shooting on that five acres, you know, and then 'cause all around it is, is a, it's a little sparse and populated, but still there are houses and stuff like that. So even though five acres seems like a lot of land, not when you playing cowboys and Indians out there.
Yeah. And there are some jurisdictions who just adopt the distance requirement and they think that's a better or more...
So we need something, no doubt about it, we need something.
Yep.
Doesn't matter what the something is.
Something is better than nothing.
And we can make this a starting point and we can tweak it as we go along, you know, if that's your pleasure, or we can...
I mean, I mean, Mr. Chair, we can come back and amend this, right?
We certainly, always can. Always can.
But at least we'll have something.
Are you, are you at peace about the dove hunters?
Well, and at the very least, since I guess the public hasn't had a chance to see this, you might wanna discuss it with some of your constituents and maybe Chairman, I mean Commissioner Jones and I can discuss, you know, some alternatives to the acreage approach, approach. And I can email the different Commissioners so that you can know what our discussion is.
And we'll definitely vote on it at the mid-month.
Mr. Chair, I mean, you can take a possibly a thirty, thirty round out of a rifle and probably three hundred yards and, but you're still dangerous. You're in that danger range further than that. So, I mean, you can have five acres as long as you got a safety berm there. You can have two acres as long as you got a safety berm, you know? It doesn't matter, but we need to do something, put something on the books to, to, because...
Is the consent system...
Yeah, I, I think, you know, what was brought up earlier, Mr. Chairman, is probably the same thing you're hearing. There's, you know, smaller lots, the, the timber land has been cut and a person, you know, shooting and it wound it up going two or three hundred yards into another area and not... Me personally, I'm, I have had on occasion, just like Commissioner Stevens had mentioned, you know, people will shoot on their property and it comes over to the property that were, that I lease. And I mean, on several occasions that it, you know, you'll find trees in there where they've hit them. So, you know, the idea was to have something because the, the responsible gun owner's not gonna do this. This is just gonna be somebody, and it, and it...
Mr. Chair.
Also, when we were talking about this and, and I had mentioned to Joey and I had mentioned to Kelly, what it does is it puts people to where they'll leave there and go somewhere else. And, and what's happening is they're doing this now on some of our drainage easements in the county. So they leave and they get on the canals and they start shooting, but, you know, state law says that you got to have permission because those are just drainage easements for us to do maintenance. We don't own it. It belongs to the landowner. So, you know, things like this is gonna have to be addressed also. But I do know that there are some, there are a few issues that, you know, if we've got something out there that either DNR or the local law enforcement can enforce, I think that's what we need to do, even if it is somebody that just needs to stop a little bit and think. I mean, a warning is, is a whole lot better than having to work a death. So this, if you wanna bring it back, that's fine. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, to be clear, the intent's not to abridge the rights of hunters or anyone else who's lawfully exercising, you know, their rights or shooting firearms. It's just to address, you know, those instances in which irresponsible gun use has, has threatened, you know, the safety of others.
Mr. Chair, I, and if, if we're saying that initially it's gonna be a warning most times, right?
Usually. I mean, law enforcement has discretion, but that's my experience. Yes, sir.
I mean, hypothetically speaking, I mean, how many, you know, habitual line steppers are we gonna have in this, you know? I mean, are we...
I don't think you really know.
Right. I'm, I'm assuming if someone finds out that, that they were in the wrong and not aware of this ordinance, then hopefully, you know, they do the right thing. I just believe there's a lot more responsible gun owners out here than, than not, especially, you know, dealing with a firearm like a shotgun or something like that. I, I would just hate to, to minimize their opportunities to, you know, for their rights, you know, and overplease them, the ones who are doing, doing right than small group of ones who are, or might do wrong, so...
But also, let's look at it this way, when that bullet comes out the end of that gun, it hits somebody and that person winds up having a funeral service.
Oh, yeah.
Let's look at it that way, too.
I'm, I'm, trust me. Completely. So, so what I'm saying is like, I, I think we're, we're, was looking at two different things. We're looking at...
We're looking at, we're looking at the same tone. We're just bringing it all together.
You're right.
And I think all...
That's my new phase for, for this year.
I think all the restrictions that are listed in the ordinance are fairly commonsensical. You know, you can't shoot over the property line of others. You can't shoot close to a schoolhouse. I think the only one that's probably giving you folks concern is the first one, that limits it to certain zoning districts and acreage. So if you like, you know, this week, I'll kind of email to you three different options or approaches.
Okay.
And then maybe you can look those over and see if one is, you're liking more than the other. So if you like, you know, this week, I'll kind of email to you three different options or approaches. And then maybe you can look those over and see if one is, you're liking more than the other. And I think once you have that nailed down, probably the rest of the ordinance will meet without objection.
The, the no less than 10 acres was, I know you looked at some other people's ordinances, was that kind of meter range?
That, that varies as well. I mean, some don't have acreage requirements, some has five, some have 10. But I think the 10 was based, I can't, I can't remember who first proposed it, but it was from our discussion last month.
It wasn't you, was it, Commissioner?
10 acres is all right if you're in the middle of 100.
Yeah, that's right.
But it's not any good if you.
Yeah, and I'm thinking too, with the county growing as it is, we got to be visionary and do our best long-term, not just for now. So, I will take, all terms as you may offer to us, but something tells me we're going to wind up back a very close to what we have, but we'll do that.
Okay.
And put it on the mid-month agenda.
And I'll consult with the sheriff as well. Yeah, and I don't see enforcement as much of, as a problem, but I'll make sure.
Not if it's going to be handled at magistrate court.
Well, I, you, you, I mean, we're talking about guns and hunting and guns and target practices, so I mean, you may want to have some conversation with DNR on it, too, because there are, you know, regulations, how many feet from the state road they can shoot and things like that. So this, I mean, I don't want us to write another law that, out there, I'm just saying, let's just make sure that we're trying to protect the public, I mean.
And we've done that as part of this ordinance, we've, we've referred to state law and state regulation. And I'll be happy to give you a listing of those, too, when the emails sent out.
All right, sir.
Sounds good.
Mid-month.
We're going to vote in two weeks, right?
Yes, sir, we're going to vote.
Good.
EMS operational agreement?
Yes, sir, there are three issues that are all related. The first is an agreement for managed EMS. And I think as you folks know, we're in the process of transitioning from Liberty Regional providing EMS services to the county providing EM services. But there will be a delay in the county obtaining, you know, a formal license. So until that time comes, you know, the county has agreed to manage the EMS services on behalf of Liberty Regional. And this agreement just outlines how that process will occur, the transition, and how the EMS we managed in the interim. It provides for the transfer of assets used in connection with EMS. Primarily, it's the, the station that we have now in Heinzville, which is owned by the hospital authority, which will be transferred to the county. County already currently owns the rolling stock, the ambulances, and there might be some other miscellaneous personal property that Liberty Regional owns, that'll be transferred to the county. And then once that, that's done, the county will manage EMS, it will hire the personnel, it will ensure that, hire a medical director, which is one of the agreements as well referenced on the agenda, and ensure that the EMS services are operated in accordance with state law and regulation. So that is, this is the roadmap for that transition and the management in the interim. Not too much to talk about, but it's under review now by, I think, both the hospital authority, but Liberty Regional in particular.
Okay, when do they plan to approve it?
I, I think all of these should be ready for adoption at your next meeting. That's, that's, that's the intent.
Right, they, they've already been sent over, so I hadn't talked to Ms. Mills, but told her they needed to be adopted in August, by that September 1st transition.
Okay, so we need to adopt that mid-month?
Yes, sir, please.
All right, so Commissioners, please read over this, are there any questions, please give Mr. Brown or Mr. Davis a call, yes, sir.
And same with the other, the other agreement is with the school district, and it just provides for dedicated or for EMS services at local football games, whether it's university or varsity. And it just provides how those services will be provided and what those services will be.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brown, Mr. Davis.
Yes, sir.
I think I'm more concerned, I'm concerned with all of it, but I've got some great concerns on the, I think it's going to come, probably become on the beat, too, since the commissioners now will be taking over the employees and the responsibility, their salaries and benefits and everything. And the funding that's being transferred now to the hospital, I think we as a board, we need to take a look at that to see what we can do to make sure that the commissioner's budget side doesn't go way up and the hospital still maintains what they are getting now, but they won't be responsible for the EMS director, I mean EMS employees. That's something that I'm very serious about.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, and probably that would not be incorporated in this agreement, because you need a standalone operational agreement by state law to run those services. I mean, that would obviously be something to consider at your millage time, when you set the millage for the board of commissioners and hospital.
But I guess my question is, do we wait till then, or do, have you engaged with them on that, you know, as of yet, Mr. Brown?
No, sir, I have not.
Okay, because I don't want to wait till we come to set the millage and then they already, they already got their millage set and it has not been no discussion about the reduction in the millage rate for them.
Right, I, I think, and Ms. Davis can help me with this, but I, I think it's the board of commissioners that actually set the millage for the authority. So they don't have the right, they, they recommend a millage for the hospital, bring it forward to the commission, so you'd, you'd be at will to adjust that millage if, if so needed.
Okay, because how many employees are you talking about, 20, 25, or more?
Actually, about 42.
Ooh, yeah. Okay, all right.
All right, that completes your.
Yes, sir.
All right.
The only, the only other thing that's on there, Mr. Davis is going to send it out, so we, we need to approve it at the mid-month meeting, is also the medical director agreement, and he's putting the final touches on that, that'll, that'll be with a private provider looking at contracting with the current provider that's also providing services to the emergency department at Liberty Regional. It, it understate guidelines, DHR guidelines, you have to have a medical director assigned if you operate an ambulance service, so.
And there's already an agreement in place, and so that will just be consistent with existing.
Okay. You can send that out to us.
Yes, sir.
We can look at that, right, too.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to ask a question. What does this do now for, as far as our relationship with their air vac?
Nothing, because the hospital doesn't really have an agreement with air vac, that's a separate contract, so.
But they have a landing pad and all there, and is that provided by?
Well, provided by, that won't change.
Okay, and this, this document here, Kelly, will prohibit any other private ambulance company from coming into the county, or?
Well, I mean, yeah, the intent of the statutory scheme is to, is to have, is to designate one provider per area, so that's the intent, yes, sir. And, and it, addressing your question, it only covers the services that are provided under the Liberty Regional's existing license, which is for ground ambulance service. So air and things of that kind are addressed in this.
Real quickly, the, the DHR provisions are zoned, so the DHR regional committee has to actually approve any service that wants to offer emergency service. And right now, this is the only zoned service in that. In order to let that in, they'd have to have a public hearing and do stuff like that. That's the reason we're having to really operate under their license, because we can't, state law doesn't allow us just to go in there and transfer that license without going through the whole zoning procedure again. So we're protected.
They'll still be able to function here in, in the county, the air vac and.
Yes, sir.
Right, yeah.
Private service.
Only ground ambulance, yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Ms. Davis.
Sure, thank you.
All right, see you mid-month. Mr. Long.
Good evening. I've got before you tonight Olive Street and Becky Street roadway improvements. We took bids on July 13th on this job. The bids came in, we had two bids, one for $90,000, one for $94,000. The low bidder was Vaughn Siddle, Siddle Construction, with a bid of $90,258.02. We read everything, we recommend that the county enter into a contract with Siddle Construction to make the improvements to Becky Street and Olive Street at the two intersections, plus a 10% contingency.
Ms. McGee, you want to speak to this?
Uh, yeah, Trent, if, you know, we've awarded this tonight, you have been out there when, you know, when, when work is stopped.
I'm not talking about schedule, but, you know, by the time we get a contract executed and he gets the bonds and all back, we have about a three-week period, so I'd probably say in about a month, we should be able to be on the ground.
Yeah, I was, I was just getting ready to tell you that, if you didn't know, to take a wild guess, but just don't get too wild. So you said about, about a month?
A little more than a month.
We should see some action in a month?
Vaughn is usually very proactive about coming and doing these, so as soon as I can get contracts with him and get things going, I'll get him to shoot me a schedule and I'll shoot it over to you, that way you can know, and I'll give you a better update on that schedule at the mid-month meeting as well.
Hopefully around, before the end of September, hopefully. Okay, I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Good, all right, all right. I guess since it's being presented, must be good with your budget, too.
Yes, sir.
Very good with the budget.
Yes, sir.
All right, y'all are pleased with the bid amount?
Yes, sir.
You know, I'm, I'm kind of on, on, what's the word, on alert, because people talking about all these price increases and stuff, but.
Yes, sir, this one's good.
This one's good?
We're okay.
Because we got the other projects, too. All right, Ms. McGee, ready?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the bid for Siddle Construction in the amount of $90,258.02.
A second.
Motion is second, we accept the bid proposed by Siddle Construction for Olive and Becky Streets, the announced amount, any further discussion on that?
Is the, the contingency included with this?
I understand you.
The contingency, is it included in this? And this, $90,000 is not, right?
The what, contingency?
Contingency, no, contingency's not.
Okay.
I'm sorry, no, we usually do $90,000, you, you award for the contract amount and you set aside a 10% contingency.
Right, I, I was just thinking about the motion.
Yes.
And that it probably needs to be included in.
Yes, in the motion it does, you're absolutely right.
So just, just, just say contingency is included in your motion, because you want to redo your motion.
No, contingency is included in, in my motion, I, I was good, but it's included.
All right, all in favor?
Just say, one point of information I forgot to say, the bids that we took between the two are less than 5% difference.
Really?
Yeah, that's pretty tight.
Pretty good.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, straight, that's, that's.
Almost in Allenhurst going out.
Awesome, Pleasant Grove.
When the census, when the census is done, it'll take Marion.
No, I don't think Marion can get this one, this is way, it's a long ways from District 1, so.
It's possible.
I think I'm good, I don't think so, Marion, that's a long way.
It's a long stretch.
Here's my memo.
May, may, maybe Connie, maybe Justin, not even Eddie, not even Eddie could get this one.
Wait till the census get through and watch, see what happens.
I don't, I don't think, if, if it moved that far, then we, we're going to have some a little wissy.
That's off Ms. Long, thank you, all right. I don't see Brendan Grant here.
I don't, I guess she made it.
Yeah, all right, we'll move on. Heat Grant, made to Kirkland though. Mr. Brown.
Bill, you've changed since you've been here, lost the thought of you.
Yes, sir, we did, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
It's okay. Our sheriff sends his apologies for not being president, our president, he's in his last week of the sheriff's course, so he'll be back as of Friday. We come before you tonight asking that you accept a grant of $300,000 from the Governor's Highway Safety Program. This grant will be used to place three additional deputies fully equipped on the road. These deputies will solely be concentrated on highway safety within Liberty County. I've asked the author of the grant, Major Bill Kirkendall, to come with me tonight, if you'll come on up, Bill, give you a small presentation, explain to you what the heat pro, grant does for us, and any, answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Y'all told me the, last time I was up here to look for more grants, so that's why we're before you tonight. But, but shortly, this, this is a short version, so heat refers to highway enforcement of aggressive traffic, and that refers to anything that's going to endanger our public safety, including DUIs, reckless driving, speeding violations. A lot of our motoring public are not even aware of our traffic stats, so from 2016 to 2020, there are an average of 1,796 crashes per year in Liberty County, average of 644 injuries per year, and an average of 15 fatalities per year. Just prior to COVID hitting in 2020, or 2019 stat alone, there were 35 traffic fatalities in Liberty County, so clearly, we, we, we have a problem. We identified the problem to the Governor's Office of Highway Safety. And what they came back with was a, an offer of a heat grant. Now, heat grants are not offered typically to the counties of our size. You usually see these type grants or heat units up around the metro Atlanta area. Based on our, our designation as a DUI hotspot, I think we're 16th in the state as far as DUI arrests and our traffic fatalities, we qualify for a heat grant. What the heat grant pays for up to $300,000 is three deputies, all the salaries up to $300,000, three vehicles, Chevy Tahos, fully equipped and marked with Governor's Office of Highway Safety markings. They will have each equipped with a dual-directional radar, LiDAR units, which is the laser units, portable field testing for alcohol impairment, flashlights, the whole nine yards, everything will be fully equipped in these vehicles. And at the conclusion of the grant cycle, after year three, Liberty County fully owns all this equipment, and it will still be serviceable at that time. So what we're seeking is, of course, your, your approval of us accepting this $300,000. The only thing we need to brief you on a little bit further is it doesn't cover the entirety of the salaries, so it covers up to 1,594 man-hours per year, per, per deputy. So we're going to run a little bit short, and I think Kim figured out it'd be about $60,000 a year one, if we ran the entire grant year, which is anticipated to be October 1st, through September 30th of the following year. Frankly speaking, I don't see how we can kick it off October 1st. I've, I've checked all over the state, I'm looking for Chevy Tahos under the state contract, and they just cannot be found right now. So we were trying to seek them out, to secure them, to put them on standby, so with your approval, we could go ahead and seek authorization to get these vehicles purchased. It may be as late as December or January before we can get the vehicles in here. So I'm thinking year one, we will probably more than likely break even on our grant authorization for year one, based on what we're authorized, which is $299,999.07. I tried to spend the 24 cents, folks, I just couldn't find anything else to buy, but they have tentatively told us, exactly, maybe an ink pen. But I've spoken to representatives from the Governor's Office of Highway Safety, and they have advised us, our bill, our, our approval is sitting on the, the decision-maker's desk. All that's waiting on is a signature, and that's expected to take place by the end of this month. And so we wanted to have everything lined up before we brought it to you with a recommendation, and with your approval, we would like to accept this $300,000 on behalf of Liberty County and get us a heat unit in place.
Before they chime in, educate us all, what number are we ranked for DUIs?
16th in the state.
Out of 159 counties?
Out of 159, yes, sir.
And how, what do we relate that, what, what do we tie that into the young population?
Our area is experiencing a huge, a huge increase in personnel, you know, Heinzville is a metropolitan statistical area, everybody comes to Heinzville, we have new shopping centers, we have new venues for people spending money, and with that, we have people, you know, coming to restaurants, consuming alcohol, getting on the roadways, coming to and from Savannah, we're right up the road from Jacksonville. All these areas that we're, that we're close to, Brunswick, are bringing some of this traffic through the area. So with that in mind, that's probably not, not helping us much with our DUI problem. And of course, we are looking at aggressive enforcement as well, we're trying to get them off the road. With 35 traffic fatalities in, in 2019, we have a significant problem.
Speak to that for me, if you will, the 35, as compared to county outside.
We're definitely above average. In fact, whenever we originally reached out to the Governor's Office of Highway Safety, they were elated that we would be interested in possibly pursuing a heat grant. It's been several years ago, but I believe David Edwards was part of a former traffic unit we had with Liberty County Sheriff's Office, AC Lewis, there's some old timers that were out there running the traffic unit at the time, but it was very successful for a number of years. And like the chief alluded to, these are not units that are going to be assigned on CAD to, to answer calls. This is full-time, nothing but traffic enforcement the entire time they're on the road. They have to log their traffic stats, if they get called away for anything, we have to take them off the grant, put them on local payroll, and then when they're done with that call, they come back on the heat grant. That's how, that's how serious the state is about how these monies are spent and allocated to the counties.
No, but some things you, you brag about your rankings, but this is not something to brag about.
No, sir, and, and, and I realize that these stats present, you know, they represent somebody's loved one, and that's what we have to look at, they represent somebody's loved one. We're doing everything we can at the SO to try to get these stats down, and this is And this is but one more method we're looking at. We're looking at, at several different avenues to try to get these stats down and this is a step, I believe, in the right direction.
I know we were kind of heavy, I think, last year with the fatalities on ninety-five. So is that a, a, a pretty good size factor in this too, having ninety-five run through the county?
Yes, sir. There were a number of stats last year solely on I ninety-five. Uh, we unfortunately had a traffic fatality yesterday on ninety-five.
Really?
You know, un- unfortunately, nothing can prevent that. It's, it's, it's an unfortunate accident, our incident. Uh, but, but things we can control, such as the speeding, the DUI, the reckless driving, the racing that we're seeing, those are something that we can have a, a positive impact on and get those reckless drivers off the road so our families can travel safely.
I was in a conversation last week with the Garrison Commander. He told me almost everybody's back now.
Yes, sir.
So when you put everybody back in the middle of school traffic.
It's not a good combination.
That's not a good combination.
Sir, we definitely have a traffic problem.
Mr. Chairman, Bill, uh, Major Kirkendall, uh, I guess within the last six months, I remember, uh, for about a week or so, there were a lot of, um, law enforcement in, in Heinzville, you know, and I think a lot of DUIs came from, from that presence. Or did that have any, any bearing on, on this?
Actually, it's a great point, Mr. Gill. It absolutely did. So Heinzville, when I was chief, we brought in the, the Governor's Office of Highway Safety and it's called Rolling Thunder, Rolling Thunder Task Force. Uh, they came in and over a three-day period, they issued five hundred and fifty five, five hundred and fifty-five citations and I think the DUI arrests was around sixty, give or take. Uh, but it goes to show just the nature of the problem. Uh, but there were, there were troopers and, uh, officers from all over the state that came in to help us. We've invited them back. Uh, we want to advertise it. They're coming back in December. So if you're driving drunk, we're looking for you. But the, the, we've actually volunteered to have them come back and that did aid in our efforts to try to secure this grant.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So your, your numbers, Major, is you, you do the county. Do you exclude Heinzville and Waldauville and Midway? I mean, because they have their own. Is that what you have to do? Subtract those numbers and we're still in the, how many DUIs?
We're sixteenth in the state and, and, and that, that excludes the DUI numbers inside incorporated areas. This is strictly unincorporated Liberty County. Whenever we're counting those.
Makes it worse.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's what I was, I mean, I figured in Heinzville, there was probably a good number, but, um.
Six since we've been here. Probably been six since we've been here.
Yeah.
And, and so our numbers would include, you know, if a DNR makes an arrest on a DUI, GSP, Motor Carrier Compliance Division, if anybody makes an arrest at unincorporated Liberty County, yes, we claim those stats. However, just Liberty County deputies alone this year so far, we're, we're within six hundred citations of what we issued in two thousand nineteen for the entire year. So there's, like I said, there's a lot of activity. I can go to lunch and issue ten tickets if I didn't have anything, if I had a ticket book, you know. It's, it's just that people are driving crazy out there. So it's, it's, we're, we're trying to get a grip on it and it's going to take aggressive efforts like this in order to do it.
You almost have to.
Sir?
I'm trying to think of the words. You almost have to build that culture that we will not be a community where there's.
Yes, sir. And, and in fact, the last night of rolling thunder. The last night of rolling thunder in Liberty County, uh, they were finishing up and six troopers rode out to one ninety-six east. And within an hour, all of them were busy transporting DUIs back to the jail. So they had to close it down. They'll be back.
You know, that's something that you've got, I mean, we've got the patrol barracks. It ain't like it's twenty miles away. It's right here in town. Of course, I don't know how many people they put out there anymore. I know when it was built, it was designed for, I think, twelve troopers or sixteen maybe that could house there. I don't know how many is out there now.
I, I couldn't tell you. Chief, do you happen to know? Okay, about seven.
Seven?
You know, the State Patrol is at, you know, seeking recruits right now. They're trying to hire just like everybody is.
Yeah.
And, and, and good viable recruits are hard to come by right now.
All right. So you need our approval to receive three hundred thousand dollars?
With your approval, yes, sir. We would like to receive three hundred thousand dollars.
All right. Commissioners?
I just have another question. Uh, Major Kirkendall, you said three hundred thousand and this is, uh, is for a period of, of how long?
This is for year one.
Year.
And this grant can run for up to three years. So we will reapply with your approval next year and we will seek, it'll be a lesser amount because of vehicles and equipment would be purchased. So we'll be seeking funding for any repairs or maintenance on equipment, the bit, on the, on the vehicles, fuel, everything we can actually attach and try, and try to get our money back forward. But year one includes fuel, the maintenance on the cars, the purchase and the, and the, and the general outline of, of equipment.
And the manpower.
And the manpower. Yes, sir.
Sure. Major, the three vehicles that you are looking for, Mr. Brown, they won't be, they won't be connected to this fleet that we're getting ready to look at?
Not.
Be separately, right?
Not initially. Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
He's trying to find Tahos, he said.
The chips.
And I guess my, uh, the other part of my question, uh, major was, um, let's say after one year and you, and you reapply and, and you're not successful, uh, through the, you, you get to keep the equipment, but the, how, how do, how would you fund the, the three deputies?
Through, either through natural attrition, uh, through shortages, or with your approval, we can add them to the rolls. Uh, we would try to do it through attrition or, or, or your, with your approval adding them on.
And, uh, the, the third part. Let, let's say we, we, we get this heat and what, what does the acronym for heat?
It's, it's Highway Enforcement of Aggressive Traffic.
I thought you were talking about August in South Georgia.
It might be.
Okay. Why does it now?
Highway Enforcement of Aggressive Traffic.
Okay. Okay, so we, um, the three deputies and let's say we get this heat program and it's successful and we hit our target audience. And, and we reapply and, um, I mean, there's a need now based on the, the stats that you gave. But let's say, you know, we, we hit the target and we're doing great and you reapply and your stats don't warrant that grant.
Wouldn't that be a great problem?
Yeah, it would. But, uh, I mean, what, what would happen then? Then, then we'd have to see how we can work it through some other means, I guess.
Typically, the, the, the agencies, the counties that are funded in year one typically receive preference for year two and three because they know you're getting it set up. Their goal, the state's goal is to have you self-sufficient in year four and to have an active unit that, that we're one hundred percent enforcing and supplying the equipment for.
Okay.
Salaries.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Let me ask you something about grants too. There you, the burn grant?
Burn grant, yes.
Do you, do you apply for that too?
We're applying for just about everything. In fact, uh, uh, the burn grant, I believe, was just one of the ones that first, uh, we just received the sixty-three thousand dollar, uh, heads-up, uh, training. That was the Grimald Trust's, uh, Coordinating Council. In the past, we had a burn grant here in Liberty County for a long time. It funded the Mace Unit for, for many years. Uh, we're also looking at, uh, funding our body worn vest, uh, through, through a grant. We've already applied for that. We're just waiting on official notification. And that pays for fifty percent of every vest that we buy for our officers. So we're looking at all funding sources right now and we're reaching out, trying to, trying, trying to access what we have the ability to.
And the lifetime on your vest is what?
Five years.
Five?
Yes, sir. It doesn't automatically dissolve at five years, but the warranty, the warranty expires at the end of five years and so they recommend replacement at that cycle.
Mr. Commissioner Gill, I heard your question down there. Very good question that you asked months ago. Major, and Mr. Brown, if this program is, is effective as I've seen it in the past, your, would your first year, uh, actually I used the correct word, revenue, wouldn't that help to support the second year just in case it does not get approved?
Based on the numbers that I have before me, I think it would fully fund it.
Okay.
Yeah. So a couple, a couple of things there. Of course, as you know, the revenue from one year can't carry over to the next year.
Right.
But I was going to say before they left, I, looking at the grant requirements, I have no doubt that they will cover.
Right.
Additional required plus some in each year that they operate.
Okay. All right.
Good.
Chairman, I'm going to tell you, I, I, of course, I've known the major when he was somewhere else, but, um, I have to put, you know, a lot of stock in what he's saying here. Um, I haven't been caught DUI, so I must be doing pretty good. So I wait.
You hadn't?
I'll stop till December, I guess, and start. But, uh, I, I, I just offer a, a motion that we, we try to, um, see if this will work and if it don't work, then you'll tell us it won't work.
Yes, sir.
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
And my, and my comment is, I, I, I just want to see us, our ranking change.
Yes, sir.
You know, we have a lot of people that we all know and love who ride these roads around here and we would hate to hear that any of them have been, have lost a life or limb because of DUI, you know, or, or just the fatalities. And I know some things are going to happen. We understand that, just about the, the growth in the community, but it'll be consoling to know that some people on the road who happen to look out. Try to keep us as safe as they can.
We are doing all we can.
Yeah.
And, and a little report about, I mean, you know that you'd be good every once in a while, whoever you want to.
Thank you for saying that. I was taking that earlier, you know, I, like you, let me get my words right. In, in the past, we have requested some of the information that you're giving periodically.
Right.
So if you all put that on your agenda to come before, because these things are eye-opening to us.
In fact, Mr. Brown was already ahead of you. He asked me the other day about traffic stats and I sent him five years' worth the next morning. We, we're tracking this stuff. We are, we are paying a close eye to it. Because not only it helps us apply for grants, but it helps us know where to, to deploy the troops.
Yeah, maybe twice a year come before us and just educators.
Yes, sir. And I'll pass that last one along.
Okay.
And it ain't got to be a formal presentation. For me, you can send it to me, an email or whatever. I said, it's got to be some type of a.
I don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm happy to, I'm copycatting Chatham kind of. I've seen the chat. I'm kind of sure if I go before the commission and give information like you give.
Yes, sir. It'd be honored to.
I thought it'd be good to have that. Keeps us in the know.
We, we produce a monthly report. We forward them to Mr. Brown and at his discretion, if he forwards it to you, uh, the, the stats are public. Certainly have access to them.
Don't have to be monthly, but maybe quarterly or at least no less than twice a year come before us and, you know, a personal presentation is better than paper.
We'd like to provide them. We're tracking them anyway.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. All in favor? All right, sir.
Thank you.
Come back with the check.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, sir. Good job.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Holton, good to see you back in our community, sir.
Yes, sir. It, it, it took me a couple hours to get here from Savannah, which was, uh, unusual, but.
Got to tie up on Highway eighty-four, didn't you?
Ninety-five.
Oh, really?
That.
Yeah.
That he's talking about. Yes, it's, um, and it's good to be here too.
Good to see you, sir.
We're, uh, resurrecting a project, which I'm, I am very, very stoked about because I felt like we left this out, you know, and. For, for good reason, but, um, the, uh, Liberty Community Complex Gymnasium that has been.
Mr. Brown, you got to give him the proper name. Mr. Sam Harris.
Sam Harris.
Oh, okay. Yes. I need to change the, uh, change the name on the drawings, right?
Samuel Harris.
Samuel B. here.
Was it Coach Sam Harris?
I don't know if we said coach in front of a number.
Was Coach Marion?
What is the name? Coach Sam B. Harris or just Sam B. Harris?
Just Sam B. Harris.
Sam B. Harris, okay.
Yeah. Just like the John D. McCann.
He's a renowned coach here, Mr. Holton.
Well, if, if you don't remember where we left off here, I should have actually put the existing drawing up here so you could see it, but we're, um, you know, we got a new, a new roof on this building, a very nice roof on this building, which helped stop the deterioration that was happening. And so, um, you know, we've, that, that money's been spent. So now the interior needs its, um, needs its, its due. We've met a couple of times on design just to try to catch up and make sure that our previous design still made sense, the one that's ten, eleven years old. And we did make some modifications, um, to this. We, since, you know, we've had more deterioration of the floor, the floor really all has to come out at this point because of the, um, the, uh, the rot, the wood rot in there and that floor was attached almost like right on top of the, um, the slab, so.
All right.
There's really no good way to save that floor. Um, it's held down with metal clips and those metal clips, when the water got in, it's rusted those metal clips out. And that's making the floor buckle and, um, so what we've done in this, a few things that we've changed in the design, I don't know if this has a pointer on it or not.
It does.
Does. Is it the?
Something about the side, uh, pull down or something.
Pull down.
Okay.
I hadn't used it, but I heard them say it.
Okay. So if you notice, probably the first thing, uh, this whole front end's different. Right now, this front end, basically the front of the building, uh, this is the existing, um, you know, uh, this is existing building right here and, um, and what we're doing, um, probably go to the next slide and show kind of the site first. Yeah. This may be a little easier to kind of orient us. Yeah, there we go. I think this is probably a little bit help, more helpful. So here's the gym here, um, the existing retention pond. These are the buildings that we've, we've kept and renovated ten years ago. Um, this parking lot is not here currently. Um, there was one back in the other project that we had planned, but it was value engineered out for cost savings. So this front of the gym, um, right now, you know, it just has the porch and then to the sides, it has a toilet and a, um, you know, ticket booths. And so what we're trying to do is create a lobby, um, under the existing roof without trying to add to the building. So when you look at this other, um, this enlarged plan, that's what we're really trying to accomplish here is what we've done is we've taken that porch and infilled it, underneath the existing roof and just have, you know, just have storefront glass across there with entrance doors so that, um, and what we may do, um, we haven't really talked about this, but we're probably going to end up with us putting a canopy back up here in front of this to protect these doors. So you'll actually have a lobby space with vending, where the vending can be, um, drinking fountains. And then right off to this side is a, is an office. And so that office would have a window that looks directly at that front entrance. It also has a window that looks out into the gymnasium. Um, and then we're basically using the old ticket window as that window. So that existing ticket window would remain. Now, on the other side of this, where the other ticket, ticket booth was and toilets, we're, right now, we're showing this as a big storage room because there is no storage really in this, in this facility. So that's, that's this whole area here. Um, it's a large storage and this could actually house like a custodial closet too, but I think I found another spot for that. So the, you know, right now, we're showing all these existing bleachers going away. We did look at one time at trying to restore those bleachers, but it, it is not really going to be feasible to try to restore those. And so what we looked at doing was using the portable bleachers like you have over the, um, in the Cuban recreational complex where you could move those bleachers around, um, and for different types of functions. And so what we're showing here are three sets of, these are, these will be portable bleachers. And then the rest of it's wide open gym floor, um, you know, keeping the side court goals or actually putting in new side court goals and in, in court goals. Volleyball stanchion, uh, potential for volleyball stanchions. And then, um, so really a real multi-use facility and we're looking at different flooring types for that. For, so you could actually use it for, uh, just, uh, a multitude of things. Now the stage, um, we're, we're going to have to redo the stage. There was a leak, um, above the stage years ago and it has just, over time, it's gotten underneath it. It looks like it's already been rebuilt one time. And so what we're going to do is, what the plan is, is to take that stage and lower it. It's up about three feet high right now. The, the problem with that height is we can't get a handicap ramp. I mean, that would take one to twelve. You're talking about thirty-six feet of ramp plus the bindings. You would be eating up a lot of your, uh, floor space with handicap ramp. So, um, what we're doing is we're planning on lowering it and that actually gives us a little more percentium height. So that's not a bad thing. That's actually a good thing, um, getting more percentium height. When I say percentium, I'm talking about this beam that goes across right here. And it also allows us to go ahead and, and we could put, now, if we lower it to like twenty, twenty-four inches, we could put a twenty-four foot ramp off to the side here so it's not way out in the middle of the floor. It's kind of, kind of tucked off to the side. So that's the stage area. Um, putting in, you know, redoing these bathrooms back here. There are bathrooms and showers and we're basically got rid of the showers and we're putting in nice, um, ADA accessible toilets. And then this right here is the, um, acts as kind of a green room to get onto the stage. So if you have anybody doing a performance, they, they could either be, um, sitting here or they could be on this side, as, as like green room space before you go on the stage. Because there's two, two different accesses to get on the stage here. Basically, it's the reverse on this side. This is the men's side, uh, or boys', boy's side. Um, you have toilets here. We're able to squeeze in. That's what I was talking about, uh, being able to get a janitor's closet in right here. And then we have an electrical room here and then we have that, like the same space, that green room space on that side of the stage. So it's, we have made some modifications to the original design, but I think it's improved it. So it's, we have made some modifications to the original design, but I think it's improved it and made it much more useful. You know, of course, we're going to be putting in new HVAC throughout, running new electrical, all new plumbing. We learned from the last job, I've, I've come to realize that if it's sixty years or older, the plumbing's going to have to be replaced. It's that, that, the iron pipe just, it's not, doesn't last, so. That's kind of what we do on our renovations of buildings or nineteen fifty's, nineteen sixty's buildings, we, we plan on taking the plumbing out. And we did run in that from the previous job, too. We had a lot of rotten plumbing out there. So this would be all new plumbing and really all new systems, so. I think we're going to be able to get away, we won't have to put like a fire sprinkler system in here unless you just want it. If we found a way that we don't have to do it, that is a cost savings, but. One of the reasons is you have plenty of egress out of this building. You have, you know, exits here, here, you know, four on each side. And then by putting these two here, that gives us plenty of egress in case of a fire. We don't have to have that. You know, have to have that, that system. You will have fire alarm system and, you know, the Wi-Fi access, that sort of thing, so all the, all of that. Going to kind of go back to that, that site layout. What we were showing there is trying to increase the parking. We do have, and put some parking adjacent to the, to the, the gym. So this is not necessarily what it has to be, but we're showing what it could be as far as parking. This, from this point on, around here is dirt right now, so. As part of this project, we're looking at, at paving that, so that gives you some staff parking back here. People are already parking back there, so we're going to, if we pave it, that'll give us a paved parking lot back there. It could give us the potential to put ADA access right up near the front entrance here. We could have ADA here right up towards the front and then really, you have all this space, you can put as much parking as you see, as you, you know, see needed. Right now, we're just showing it. I can't remember, had to count on these spaces, I'm sorry about that, but. That in conjunction with all your other parking, you have lots of, lots of parking. But we're trying to get more a little closer to the gym itself. And this parking could be shared also by the, by the pool if you needed it. And then, of course, for, there's, there's future plans for additional play fields in the back, that parking would also be used for that. So that's, that's kind of the gist of all the improvements. Are there any questions?
One. Could, could you go to the layout of the court? Go back to that. Now, that's, that's going to be, I guess, the, the main court that goes from east to west. And you said it's going to be additional courts that run north to south, two additional courts.
Additional courts, just like you would have in a, in a PE, PE gym.
Right, okay. Yeah, that's, that's good. Okay.
I think, Gary, we had six, I think we had six, six goals down there one time.
Six that went?
Yeah.
This, this way? It was six?
It was two.
Right now, there's, there's two sets running this direction.
Yeah, and there was two.
Then there's the one running this.
Oh, you're talking six.
There are six total.
Six total, yeah, I know, I know.
Yeah, there are six total.
Could be three courts side by side, yeah, two, okay.
So you can do, yeah, so you can do one court tournament play or you can cross courts.
Yeah.
That's right.
All right.
Save the big one for the championship game.
That's right.
My, my concern, canopy, I, I hate walking out of a building right into the rain.
Yes.
You gotta have something, you don't, don't just put me at the doors and I'm, and then, yeah, I hate that.
Right, and this is, you know, we were trying to fit everything underneath the existing, our nice new roof. But I think that's what I was saying, I think extending this out, I don't think is a big deal to put a, put a canopy out here.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, I don't think it's as big of a deal cost-wise. Function-wise, it is a big deal. We do not like to have entrances that are unprotected.
David. Where's the swimming pool side, right? Where the bleachers is at? That's the swimming pool side?
It's down here on this side.
Would that be? Could that be the canopy side? Can you do a canopy over on that side, since that's going to be your parking lot side?
To, you mean, change the front entrance around?
Yeah, I'm just.
We, you know, we did actually look at a version of that to try to, to your point, to try to modify the front entrance. Problem is, and on the inside of the building, we kept encroaching into the.
Right.
Floor space. You know, there is, there is a door and a canopy right there, a small one, but it's not a, it's not a main entrance.
Actually, you got two those.
That's right, there's two, two of them. There's, there's one here, one.
And the one right there.
And then these are just egress on the backside. I mean, you could go out that way, it's just, it's just not a. I really felt it was important to maintain the front, the front of the building as the front entrance. But we don't have to, but it's more for like posterity stake of the, you know, it being the way the building was originally.
I probably would, Jimmy also talked about using that open floor space over here. Uh, to do possibly other things like ping pong tables and things like that that folks may want to do to preserve that space. So that was one, one thing, having some of this traffic in and out of that side door. But I think it'd be pretty easy to put that canopy on the front to do that.
But I.
But then also putting that canopy on the front, remember now, we've got a clean and beautiful that has to go around that side to the back.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I think you, you, you got, you got plenty of room, I think, up on the lawn.
We were looking at even, you know, a six or eight foot sidewalk with, and then putting a canopy and having, we have enough room to put the canopy, have a, basically a. An entry space there and then still have the curb. It actually gives a good spot for a, for a drop-off if you needed to drop off someone. And then you can go in the back, turn around and come back out. But it's, uh, there is room to do it with the existing road there.
David, your site, go back to your, your plan there where your parking lot is at. All right, the, the. Your, I'm just trying to see where the closest door is at there for your handicap parking. I mean, you've got to come from the parking lot. With, with all this parking lot to the right there, existing parking, would that be designated as handicap parking?
Well, we were looking at parking spaces here and we hadn't drawn them yet, but right here would be, you know, we have to get the appropriate number of spaces for that.
Right, and then those doors.
That's the door right there.
That, those doors that have a post in the middle and then they open up like, you got a door on each side?
Right.
They're a pair of doors.
So that width is, will be sufficient. I mean, they'll have to be changed out in order to be.
All new doors.
Okay.
All, all new doors. These would actually be storefront doors, you know, kind of like what you have down here, a pair, a pair of storefront doors that.
Well, we have noticed, of course, Commissioner Giller and I had looked at the one that James Brown, there's not. That many handicap spots and then, I mean, you know, you got a handicap spot and you got to roll from here to the middle of the road out there for them to get in there and that was. One thing we were trying to, and of course, I hadn't been involved in this, but I just, as close as we could get the. Handicap people in and out of the building would be the best thing there. I don't know.
To your point, that right there is about as close as you can get.
Yeah.
Because you're literally going on the sidewalk and bam, you're right there in the front entrance. Right now, we have two, we have two shown down here with, you know, going from here to there. We can get them pretty close for this.
Well, and you know, there's not that many handicap spots because there's not very many people show up because they know they can't find a place to park, so. We need to, you know, make sure there's at least ten or twelve of them.
And now, we, we do have a minimum amount that we're required to put, but we can, that's, that's just a minimum. We can put more if you feel like there's a need.
Yeah, but when was the minimum put in? I mean, we don't, there's.
Oh, we haven't done, we haven't done anything.
Right, but I'm just saying, you know, the minimum was, might have been established eight years ago, ten years ago, and that's the thing that I'm saying. We're seeing more and more people. Of course, I'm not handicapped yet, but if I do, I'd like to be able to, you know, people be, have access to them, so.
Well, if, once you, with your own crutches, you know, you don't have to be in a wheelchair, but you realize how important it is to park closer to the building.
Is that what you was trying to say?
Something we run into at, at church, you know, in, in Liberty County, you know, with the high military population, a lot of our vets.
Yep.
Have handicap stickers, so, so they're able to park there, so to Commissioner Walden's point there, to make sure we have probably more than what you would.
Sure.
Because.
Well, you have the space to do it, so.
Yeah.
I just, it's.
I'm sorry.
It's always easier to go back and move the line over, I understand that, but I mean, we, we, when we start with the signage and all, we need to make sure. And then the doors, you know, you've got.
Oh, it's easier to put it in right now, that's for sure.
Yeah.
And we can, because it is a different sized space.
Can we go back, see Mr. Commissioner Walden, go back to the. I, I'm concerned, I was, I was thinking here, I heard you talk about the bleachers, man. That, that's where the nostalgia is, those old bleachers. And you're giving those a thorough look where it's totally cost prohibitive to try to preserve those?
Well, we, we looked at them a long time ago and we actually were going to try to like save one set. And try to scab all the pieces from one and then try to make one good set.
I like the sound of that.
It's finding someone to do that.
Yeah.
A bleacher company that will actually do that is a little tougher because those things are, there's a million pieces in those bleachers. But I can look, I mean, I can, I can search and see if someone would be willing to do that today.
Please give it your max.
Even when those bleachers were new, they were hard to open and close. When they were brand new, you, you.
I'm having a flashback.
You, you needed six grown men.
We used to do.
And I was in the eighth grade, you needed six grown men. As an eighth grader, we couldn't even close them. And, and they were new, you, you know, so.
I, I can't even. They didn't have WD-40 back.
They didn't put no grease on it, Gary.
They, they were hard to open and shut, I'll tell you that.
I think the community would appreciate if we could salvage at least one.
If you could save the boys and set them on top of the new easy slide. But, 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 but rolling them old ones out and rolling them back in.
Well, what you may have to do is just put them, put one set of fixed and just weld them together and let them stay, never move them.
Well, we've got to do something because there's four alumni up here.
I'm, I'm hearing it.
Yeah, I have a flashback.
And there was alumni, we, that's one reason why I'm really concentrating on those handicap. No, but, you know, back to that, Mr. Chairman, we, we don't have, we got, we've been talking about. Fire safety and being able to leave the building, David, but when you push your wheelchair out that end and that's the closest door. We need to make sure that there's a sidewalk there to come back around to the parking lots. I mean, you know, there's one end of that that's going to be, there won't be sidewalks, right?
This side here on the back of the building.
Right, so if they have to exit that building, if that's the closest place for the public to get out, then, you know, we, you pushing somebody, there's something to think about.
So we could, you're, you're concerned, we can, certainly, this is an easy one here. This is, we should have sidewalk here anyway. Potentially just adding a small sidewalk back here just for that would not be a bad, a bad idea.
That, what are they, five foot? They have to be wide, five foot?
Five feet wide is the, probably the minimum we do.
I just think it'd be something that, I mean, it may be the last thing you have to put in there to keep it from getting broken and tore up, David, but I think. I've done already identified, I mean, this place is here. What, we've got two handicap spots down here for this building, Mr. Chairman, or three out front. Joey?
Three.
Always coming back, always coming back.
There's three out there and three over here.
Some over, some over here, some on the side.
On the side.
Some in this lot. Yes, sir. I don't, I don't remember these at camp, though.
You know our regular parking spaces, we don't, we don't do these nine foot parking spaces, they're all ten feet wide.
Yeah.
I'm glad of that, too. Some people have them so now.
I'm glad we got to this point.
You got to a good start.
That's pretty.
You got to a good start.
What we wanted was a chance to show you that and then be able to come back maybe with some smaller revisions and then go to construction drawings. So we could go ahead and get it on the street. Y'all were anxious to try to do that. I know you had some other projects you wanted to look at, but wanted to see what this shook out at first, so.
Yeah. Most definitely.
I would like to see, you know how, when you go in, because y'all did work at Bradwell, too, years ago. Bradwell's gym is kind of like a courtyard in front.
Oh, yeah.
Rather than just.
Okay.
Yeah.
Like a plaza.
Like a little, yeah.
Space.
Yeah.
Sure.
You might want to hang out there before you go to the ceremony. Then, too, I was thinking, too, there may be something that's. If it's something that's held in the auditorium, then you leave there and go to the gym, so you make, make sure you have a good ability to flow from one to the other.
I don't think there's none of the bleachers left from our old Bradwell already.
I wonder what happened to our bleachers. We pushed them, too.
Only they all gone.
They were the same, made by the same company.
They, they salvaged them.
Lonny Carter, he posted it out.
Yeah. You had to get them justified.
There's a lot of scrap metal in there.
Any suggestions, we'll, we'll, we'll feed them to Mr. Brown there, but off to a good start.
Yeah.
All right.
Good start.
Thank you very much.
What, what do we kind of, walk me through where we go from here, kind of sort of?
From, from here, we'll go into more like design development. Right now, this is basically a conceptual. Design development, we'll develop some images of the exterior and interior, what the space can look like. And then we'll start tightening these drawings up for the building and for the site. We could see, you know, doing our parking counts and, and then if you want to do over and above what those parking counts are, like deciding what those, what that's going to be and. And really, design development is the next step. And then, once we come back and probably just show you some of those images, and then we'll, we'll be in construction documents and that won't, shouldn't take very long to finish it up from there.
We're excited.
Yes, sir.
I'm too. I feel like we're not done. It's not done yet.
We're excited.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good to see you. Thank you for your work with the Head Start, too.
Oh, appreciate that. See the brick coming up out there?
Yeah, I hadn't seen it, but.
A lot, a lot of brick coming on the building right now.
Thank you for your work with it. You did a lot of heavy lifting with that, so we appreciate that.
That was a long time, too.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
All right. Midway EMS station?
We've just got a room full of architects tonight.
Is, is yours prettier than his?
Yes, sir. Still, and Commissioner Giller, that looked like a slice of key lime pie.
You forget, you forget the big doping to go against Buckley now.
Yeah, I've been friendly competitors with Buckley for about forty years, I think.
All right, all right. And still, instead of it being the same room at the same time.
Oh, yeah. Matter of fact, tell Craig, I said, hello, I'm Mike. I'm with S.P. Design Group Architects and Engineers, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about your new EMS building. Let me introduce also to the rest of the team, Bob Day is project architect.
Hello, Mr. Bob.
Charles Smith is with our office and is working on the team. He's kind of our medical specialist in the office that helps us out on different items that we run into. What we want to look at, I'm going to first go over the floor plan quickly, and then Bob will get in and talk to you about interiors, exteriors, things of that nature. And then Trent will talk about your site, site development, since it's related to more than just this site, it's overall in the. First, let me point out that the floor plan we developed with Mr. Brown, kind of revised it up to the point you see it now. This is what we'll say is beyond the design development, we're getting ready to get the documents to go out for your RFP system. Let's see if I can get this going. Better yet, that's what I'm used to, how about that? Now, we are running four bedrooms, two beds each, so you can house eight people in this facility. Of course, we have men and women's toilets available. Your drug storage that is accessible to your ambulance area, of course, that's a secure area, required to be so. Our electronics or electrical room setup, now, what is kind of unique in buildings nowadays, you always have your IT room. That's becoming more and more important as we go forward. We try to give them enough space. The day room and kitchen area, this is the living space for your employees while they're here. The important part of EMS building, obviously, is the seconds that you save in getting to your vehicle and getting them on the road to save that life. So we always try to make sure that that is quickly accessible from your people that's on hand at the time to the ambulance and out. So we found that this layout works very well. We've worked with other counties, similar facilities. Now, when they come back from a call, we've got a report area where they can sit down and write their reports. We also have an individual office area, it's just a suggested layout for a manager or someone that needs to go in and work in a closed office situation. situation. Our pantry storage serves your kitchen and general storage for this area, now, we do have a general storage that serves in this area that's not a secure storage, and then a toilet area that works for your day room and the, uh, people working in this area here. Now, let me tell you a little bit about the building, and then Bob will talk to you about the, uh, look and exterior and such, we talked about what kinda structures to use in this, uh, whether we wanna go to a pre-engineered structure, to a bar joint structure, or to a load-bearing masonry, and in today, today's COVID world, uh, we decided we'd go with a load-bearing masonry, because that's available, also, we can work that to what's called a FEMA 361, which helps you from your weather, you're in a hurricane tornado situation, so we can go in and reinforce that concrete masonry, make sure we have a hurricane hole down on the roofs, make sure the roof structure is a little stronger, so that you have a FEMA 361 level, and that, what that means is that that building, once we fill all the cells, want to reinforce it into it, will resist up to a two-hundred mile an hour tornado puncture test, so it minimizes the door and the windows, but it also helps you during the storm, because this is considered one of your more emergency required buildings, we understand that, we worked with other counties to do that, now, also, on the roof structure, if you try to do a pre-engineered building today, it's nine to eleven months delivery time, hard to get, prices up, try to do a bar joint building, nine months delivery, hard to get, prices up, we can get masonry, and we can have that on-site and get it done today, so that falls better into the overall schedule of what we were looking at, and better in the overall budget that we're looking at, so, we tried to consider all of the structural systems to get the best one available and best one cost-effective, and this appears to be the best way to go, I've had a couple of construction estimates, look at it to be sure that my assumption is correct, they verified that. Now, uh, I'm gonna bring Bob up and play a little bit of the technology part, I'm gonna tell you, I'm fascinated with some of this, and before it's over with, I'm gonna give you a little QR code sheet, if you got an iPhone.
Mm-hmm.
You touch that, and it'll carry you to the space, virtual, where you can be in the space.
Hmm.
Look at your phone and anything you wanna see in that room, ceiling, floor, walls, be right there.
Hmm.
At my age, that fascinates me. That part of it does help you in perceiving the building, so that you understand exactly what you're, uh, approving and what they're gonna use and how it works for you.
Mm-hmm.
Bob, if you'll come on up, let's talk about.
So, we'll start, hello, my, my name's Bob Day, uh, we're glad to be here with you today, um, you talked about this Q code, we'll give you an example of what that looks like, uh, right now. This is when you, when you do that Q code, you know, you get it on your phone, but this is kinda how it works, and you'll, you just turn around and see the space however you like, this happens to be the day room, right here, just keep panning it around, yeah, so if you're a Denver Broncos fan, there you go. We, you see, we have, uh, what's called LVT, and it'll look like wood on the floor, and we have gypsum board walls, you see the kitchen there in the, in the background, wood wall, wood doors, cusco tile ceiling. That's looking into the office door. And that's the front entrance as it stands today, with your writing area to, uh, for reporting. A little bit further, yeah, keep going, and there's the door into the bays, right there. All right, let's, uh, what we'd like to do is show you the outside, what we have is a little video, it kinda runs you around the outside, takes the inside and kinda shows you the spaces, go ahead and run that for us. The outside is, uh, it, uh, the structure is a masonry wall, as, uh, Mike indicated, and then we have a split face block on the outside veneer, and also some metal siding or metal panels. The dark color is the, uh, or the, uh, metal panels, and the split face block are the, uh, the lighter and the, and also the base of the building, the doors will all have canopies over them. So, those are the exits from the bay. We have bay doors, as you saw in the front, and then as we come around to the back, there are second set of doors on the back, so it's a drive-through situation. And it's a metal roof.
Well, that's panning all around, let me touch on a couple things that follow mine to go, you talked about the drive-through part of it, we found that both, all of your ambulance drivers, fire truck drivers prefer that drive-through, run from the back end.
Mm-hmm.
Also, the plan is set up so that you can house four ambulances in there, uh, or if you wanted to have two ambulances in a fire truck, instantly you can do that, some of these things we learn from other candidates, other facilities.
Sorry about the slow, slowness of the video, it's not, uh, moving as fast on your old system as it does on ours, but we're gonna enter that side door here in a second. There's a small window there to the right, over the kitchen window, or over the kitchen counter, all the windows are small. So, this is coming in the back corridor where the bedrooms are.
And you go make sure it stays at need all the time?
We're exiting back out, the front doors. There's some handicap parking right there on the front. So, we hope that gives you a good idea of what, uh, what we're looking at here.
Yeah.
For this project.
All right, uh, and we will specify BMW and the Camaro, the little style, the ease that go with it, you know? Okay, thank you. Any questions at this point?
Looks good.
Okay, uh, we're about six thousand square feet in round numbers, and your budget on this type building is gonna be between a hundred and seventy-five and two hundred dollars square foot, uh, what that equates to for building only is go one point two to one point three million.
Hmm.
Finished product. Now, site work, uh, Trent?
Oh, he's coming up, Mr. Chairman, I just had a question on the panels.
Yes, ma'am.
On, on that, whenever you were showing that, that was be on both ends, was that correct?
Yes.
On both ends, okay.
Basically, we weren't trying to, uh, be with a, I don't have a drive-through on ours.
Looks good, he's kinda mixed our site on that.
You, you and David Holton both got to have.
His, uh, his site there was, was pretty darn good, I was able to notice that, uh, we were missing a stripe on our site plan, there's a little line, I was like, ah, missed something, it looks, looks really, really good, and it's not his fault, but we still didn't have it on there, so, looks really, really good, so, um, what we're doing on this site is right out there in Trade Port West, right off Seventeen, and we have about a two acre site on the left side of the entrance road that goes through there, um, our water sewer will come from the, uh, industrial authority, um, we have to go back with the water sewer a little bit to connect to where they've got, we've got some cost sharing going on with that, that we're working with on them, on that, um, all our drainage will go to, uh, wetland that's beside us, and, uh, this side will be, a lot of dirt on this side, because it's kind of a low site, but other than that, it'll, it'll work out really, really well, and I do have site plans that I can give each one of you, if you wanna take a look at them, there are many copies of it, uh, we, we saw, we wanna make a few changes to some minor things that won't matter for our construction plan, unless you want it, we'll just hold on to them, we'll give you some more clean copies.
Yeah, hold on to those.
So, about, about four foot of fill on the building pad, but in talking with Development Authority the other day, they already have plans to go ahead and fill that area along with some others, and so, we, we envision a partnership with them, working on, as they're doing their fill on their sites, to also fill our site, and we've already talked that. Um, we're supposed to meet with the Development Authority, who wanna show this to y'all first, we're supposed to meet with them in August to show them kinda the same presentation, uh, we will have to meet aesthetic guidelines for the park that have been developed by the Development Authority, but, uh, so far, it's looking, looking pretty good, gonna give them an estimate on the budget for water sewer.
Yes, uh, it's about a hundred and forty-five thousand.
Yeah, I would think it's about a hundred and forty-five, a hundred and fifty.
Chairman. Which side of the road is the water on down there, Trent?
The City of Midway water, there is City of Midway water on our side of the road that goes further down the road, but we're in the Development Authority site, and we're in their service delivery area, so we have to get water sewer service from this, uh, LCDA.
Which, which I'll go ahead and say, really, really works out better, uh, because we're trying to fast track the project for several reasons, uh, City of Midway right now doesn't have the, the, um, pressure capacity.
Pressure.
That we need, even if we tie it on to them and ran into there, so we'll be, and we'd rather, yeah, we'll be on the sewer, Development Authority sewer office.
I didn't know where the water was at there for the Development Authority.
The Development Authority water.
It actually comes in from the back, actually comes in from the back of the site, and we'll run those lines up to.
It's all the way at the back of the site, ain't it?
Where is this place at, yeah?
Development Authority.
From the Cherokee.
Mm-hmm, Development Authority will actually help us participate, and it costs us some larger main runs there, and then we'll, we'll tone.
It just goes back a little bit, um, if you wanna grab a few of those and hand out, let them kinda thumb through them, if you'll just leave them, um, we'll pick them back up after the meeting.
Only other comment, I guess, is, you know, we came in, we did an initial review of a layout, and I think it was Commissioner Fraser, in fact, brought to the point that, you know, hey, we need to plan for, for more growth, right now, you've got two ambulances that are housed there, um, most of the time, uh, so, this enables doubling that capacity, you've really got four people that, not all the time, but sometimes stay there, this also doubles that complete capacity, and you could even double that further with bunk beds, uh, if you wanted to in the future.
Trent, look here just a minute. Back here's where the lift pump is?
No, that's, that's where their, uh, gravity sewer is, and their water is, lift pumps is further back.
Hey, and, and this is the road that goes in?
Yes.
And there's power in that road, so.
I'm not sure exactly where the power is in that road.
It goes all the way back here.
And what we're doing is we're coordinating with the Development Authority on the location of where all that goes, so that we don't come into your problem, we don't come down water or sewer, and kinda put the power to be at that.
That's what I'm looking at here, when you, you're gonna have to pull, you're gonna have to dig water all the way back up here to the front?
Right.
It's too far, you got water right there at the highway.
You don't have the pressure.
Don't have the pressure.
What kinda pressure you need, it's a toilet, I mean, what, tell me what you need.
Sprinkler system.
Huh?
Sprinkler system for the building.
And they don't have.
You're better to, you're better to go, we, 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 maybe we can have a sidewalk laying, we're, we're, we're better to go the other out.
Talk offline.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question to you, it looks like, uh, um, we won't be, uh, entering and exiting off of Seventeen, there's a little road.
Yes.
There that you're gonna.
Yes, ma'am, so, what the Development Authority has is a superdrive that is, is gonna be planned to be there, when I say superdrive, it's a four lane drive.
Interesting.
And so, what we're ending up doing is we're installing only what we need for our site.
Okay, so it's not paved in there now?
Our, our, it's not paved there now, no, ma'am.
Okay, and you're gonna get.
So, we got the D cell lane, and we're gonna do a two lane road.
To get, okay.
To our site, is all we're doing, but we're setting it up so that when the Development Authority does their work, they just expand the.
Okay.
So, that way, they're not losing anything, and we're working together to make this thing work, so that this will be a nice park when we're finished.
Other thing I wanted, uh, Mr. Parker to address too, is we wanted to show that to y'all, we need to go to Development Authority, and then he's prepared to go ahead and do, finalize the construction drawings and, and, and put it out for bid, uh, so, I, I wanna ask Mike if he can address the timing on that.
Yes, do that.
This is the part where I say Trent will be finished tomorrow.
Don't say that.
No, they're very close, uh, what we are talking about is having all contract documents ready to put out for bid in two to three weeks, uh, so that we can go ahead and start advertising in two weeks, uh, we'll get that, so you can put it on your website, uh, procurement site, however you need to do that, do your due diligence, so, I'm gonna tell you, two to three weeks, we're ready to have it out, put it out for bid, thirty day bid time, and then take your bids at that point.
You expect good participation?
Yes, sir. I've already talked to three contractors, uh, hopefully, we'll have, you know, more six to seven will be ideal, uh, in today's world, I can't tell you for sure.
Mm-hmm.
But I am pushing to get as many good contractors as I can in this area, and we do a lot of work in this area, so.
Okay.
Uh, we've got a couple of contractors that have done similar type work that I've already talked to.
Yeah, this will be our first EMS building that we've built, so, we're looking forward to this, being, being a nice one.
Yes, sir.
And efficient.
You know, definitely gonna be efficient.
Okay.
Uh, we'll work it through, it's kinda like, I like to say, working with S.P. Design Group, kinda like a good meal, you go in, not sure, but after the meal, you're just thinking, great. Is that what you said to say? Okay.
Joy, have we had, has Crystal looked at this?
Uh, she has not, we didn't wanna show it to anybody until, now, she's seen the initial layout.
Okay.
So, we'll, Bobby's sure.
Please, please do.
Now, one thing I will tell you too, and, Joy, this, the floor plan you see here, see the little red boxes in the spaces?
Mm-hmm.
When you present, uh, Joy, if you're presenting it to a group or something, all you gotta do is touch that, Clint, could you do that for me, touch one of the boxes? All right, you just touch that box, and.
That's all.
The computer will load up what the interior of that space looks like.
Really?
And you can do what Bob did, walk around that space with that, uh, ease of mobility and the technology.
A mighty big space.
And/or, if you wanna really play and have fun, I can fix that phone, touch one of those QR codes.
Yeah.
And then hold that phone, and then walk around the room.
We're gonna do that, you got some for everybody? Okay. Each one's a different room?
Each, there's seven or six of them, I'm sure. Yeah. All right, and that's something also, if you wanna put it on your website to show the public, it's there, they can see it. Okay, any other questions, anything else? Well, I do appreciate the opportunity, and if you do have any questions, don't hesitate to call me, Mr. Brown can find me most anywhere, as he has found out.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Elections contract for the City of Midway.
Yes, sir, so we've got one for City of Midway and, uh, City of Flemington, if we could entertain those separately, uh, we appreciate it very much for the record, they are your standard election contracts that provide for a hundred percent reimbursement plus administrative overhead. So, they're a hundred percent plus. Ron, all, everything? Yes, sir, it'd be everything, anything related to those municipal elections.
Chairman, ten motion.
Yeah, make a motion that the Liberty County Board of Elections entertain to take care of the election for the city of Flemington.
Second. And Midway. And Midway.
And Midway.
Can we do one at a time?
You want to break them up?
Just in case something ever comes up about.
All right. They're second, they're here second?
Second.
Any further discussion, all in favor? All right, your next motion, sir?
Same motion, Ms. Chairman, for the city of... Which one did you do, Mayor?
Flemington.
I'll do Midway.
Same second, Mr. Chair.
Same motion, same second. We entered agreement to conduct the elections for the City of Midway. Any discussion on that? You heard the terms earlier, all in favor? All right, motions carries.
Mr. Chairman, what was the name of the engineering firm?
SP Design Group.
SP?
Yes, ma'am.
And where are they from?
Out of Macon.
SP.
Design Group.
They got the toys.
Sure do. They got an IT department.
Announcement, sir?
Only one quick one, just on another project follow-up. Did get the appraisal on the property that we're talking to Coastal EMC about. Have forwarded that to Coastal EMC. So they'll give that consideration and come back with what we need to try to do on that.
Okay. All right, Commissioner, then?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brown. Where are we now with the money?
ARPA, the ARPA rules haven't been finalized yet. We check those every day. But we are going to go in and prepare for mid-month to do you an overview. Much like you probably saw, same overview, I think that probably Chatham did yesterday at their meeting. But we're planning that for your mid-month, if that's okay with the chairman, to put that on the agenda.
Yes, sir, it is.
I have one question for Joy.
One other thing, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Trent's still here. The issue that I ran into the other day down in Sunbury, how do we deal with that issue? Where they're supposedly have altered the wetlands, supposedly, not certain, but how do we deal with an issue like that continuously?
Well, I don't know that you're able to ever stop it. But what we do first, since this, we're not jurisdictional directives of the wetland, and all we can basically do is go down there and say, look, we think there's a situation that exists that you may have done something and maybe educate them to do that. Normally then, once we would observe that, we would contact the Corps of Engineers to do that. But first, we want to go talk to the property owner to do that.
Okay, because they have made a mess in the back of this church, a mess. I think some of y'all have seen the pictures. They've made a flat mess.
Yes, sir, since we're not a jurisdictional authority over those wetlands, that's what we can do and then contact them.
Now, the other thing about that same project, they were able to go out and buy their own driveway pipes and install it themselves. And it was never inspected by anybody from the county. Where are we? I'm lost.
Commissioner Stevens, I'd like to tell you, we could catch every driveway that's put in. But I think what we're going to have to do is, as those are brought up, and thankfully, you know, you brought those up, is then to go back and make sure that they are installed right at no cost to us to do that and make sure everything's okay with those permits. That's all we can do.
So Paul has put a stop work order on it?
No, sort of, wasn't a work... Wasn't anything that's permitted through his office that could be stopped. So he really doesn't have the authority to stop the digging from going on.
But they're encroaching, having water encroaching on grave sites down there.
Well, again, that'd be something that the county engineer would take a look at on the drainage side, right? But there's no authority that I know we have by county ordinance to put any kind of stop on there or injunction. Again, that falls back to the Corps. But that's the reason we go out and talk to the property owner. It's not the first time that something like that's come up.
Okay.
I wasn't resolved the last time.
Same way. And the Corps got involved and it stopped.
Wouldn't stop tonight?
They have some pretty heavy penalties and they have the heavy foot to do it.
So we... I'm trying to follow you, so we would have to inform, ask the Corps to look into it?
We would go out and talk to the property owner to ascertain what's going on. Because when Trent calls the Corps, they're going to say, well, what's going on? Have you talked to the people? And we'd like to give them as much information as we can on it.
Okay. Okay. And then on the drainage side, sir?
Been out there to look at it and what we do is we give them directions on what they need to do to find any impact they have on the neighbor immediately so they're not flooding somebody. Yes, sir. We're working with Mr. Zekman on making sure these point of contact, get with the contractor, to get with the property owner to...
Practically, I know you shouldn't do that. Is that something that we have written that you can't do that?
Well, listen, again, it's not our ordinance.
I understand.
It is with, well, part of it's soil and sedimentation control that comes into that too, which we do regulate as a, we regulate the state regs for them here on that. But the wetland portion, draining the wetland, doing that, we don't, we, that's straight Corps enforcement, state law.
So our regional sediment control ordinance regulates that they have to get a land disturbing activity if they're over an acre or if they're within a certain feet of waters of the state. In this case, they'll be within a certain feet of the waters of the state. So to do what they need, what they're doing, they really should have done a land disturbing activity plan, full site plan, that would show how they're doing their grading, how they're doing their water and sewer, how they're doing their drainage and their regional sediment control. That should have all been done upfront. We didn't know what was going on until Mr. Stevens called and said, hey, what's going on down here? That's when we went out there and Mr. Zekman did ask the property owner to stop what he was doing and get things rectified.
So as of right now, Trent, they will not be able to, will they be able to continue or they were actually at a halt?
They should be at a halt until they get the right permits. I will go back out, I want to go back out and look at the water that may be finding on the graveyard and the cemetery area.
Right.
Because I didn't notice that when I was out there before, but we have had a tremendous run ring since then. So, and some things may have washed and blocked the drainage. So I want to go back out and look at that. And there may be something that we need to get him to do to eliminate that issue right away. But otherwise, he's got to go, before he does anything, he's got to go through and get the proper permits. Yes, sir, he should be at a stop.
Okay.
Let me ask you a question about that. Could they, could somebody had already went to LCPC and said, hey, this is what I'm wanting to do? And that be approved before we know about it?
This wouldn't be LCPC.
Well, I mean, I wouldn't have thought it would have, but there's no possible way that somebody could have already been over there and they said, hey, I'm just going to dig a ditch right here where I'm going to go out here and build a house.
They, and Trent, correct, Trent works with them closer than I do. But they generally don't get involved in any drainage things unless it's a subdivision plan or site plan development or something like that where they're developing more than one house. They're not going to, they're not going to.
They are extremely careful about telling you that you have to obtain permits for what you're doing. They're very careful about that, so.
Well, I mean, I figured there would be too, but I just hoped that we didn't wind up with kind of one of these things that not knowing what the left's doing.
That's right. They're good about communicating.
Mr. Chairman, that's it on that?
Play in.
Yeah, that's...
No, Joe, I just wanted to kind of clarify a statement. Not a statement, but I thought, I know this is being recorded. But when Mr. Davis was up there and he was talking about the firearm ordinance and I was asking the questions about the, you know, like, seemed like he led me to believe that it would be settled in magistrate court. And I wasn't taking a slight at, you know, I know we have state court, municipal court, magistrate court, superior court, supreme court, all of them. But, you know, we're talking about guns. And, you know, I've been to magistrate court and I've never seen anybody walk out of there with handcuffs. You know, handcuffed from standing before a judge in magistrate court. And if we're talking about guns and, you know, you settle that that way, it just doesn't seem to have that much...
Well, because, you know, you can't, the only thing that can go to state court is a state law. And because you're making the law locally, it has to be an ordinance. You can't create, obviously, the state law. And so that is how, I started to say that earlier, but that's how that gets separated too. Now magistrate court, though, you know, you're violating county ordinance. You go in there, you fail to do whatever you're supposed to do.
Go and send no more, county.
Well, in the end, they can incarcerate you for violation of an ordinance. Have done that, as a matter of fact, with a cleanup project.
You know, I've seen them stand in front of the state court judge and be cuffed and taken off. But I hadn't seen that at magistrate court. And we were talking about guns. We were talking about someone unlawful discharge of firearms causing some kind of harm or whatever. And, you know, that's the level of judgment that was...
Well, no, so anything you put into place, you can only create an ordinance locally. You can't create anything that would go to state court. But there could be, I think that's what he was saying, there could be, depending on the situation that happens, a state law violated also that's already on the books. And in that case, then the decision could be made to write the citation to state court, not a magistrate court.
Oh, okay. Where it has more teeth.
All right, that's all for the good of the order? Chairman, ten motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Chairman, second.
All in favor?
So move and second. So move second and...